Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for June 4th, 2024, 7:14. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, again. I think our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members? Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth. Councilmember Soto.
President.
Mayor Protim Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth is not in attendance.
Uh, next, we have full session announcement.
No reportable action at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, changes to the agenda. Council, are there any, uh, or staff, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, moving forward. Uh, next, we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Um, are there any citizen comments on any item not on the agenda on the phone? Anyone on the phone? Here and now, are there any citizen comments in the chamber?
Bob Wallace, Mayor, Mr. Collins, just one quick question. The guest services for this guest internet for citizens that want to attend the meetings here, are we ever going to get that resolved that's out again tonight?
I'm sorry, you didn't catch that? Oh, for the council chambers. I'll have IT look into it.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Good evening, everyone. Tip chief, local resident. Um, firstly, I wanted to say a quick update. I know the last time I was here, I said I would reach out about, um, potential folks to get involved in terms of grant writing, my professors. Um, they said they're booked out for the near term, uh, maybe follow up in a couple of months, and so if that's still of interest, um, then I can share contact. Um, I also wanted to ask, um, I don't have this in my notes, when we were going to get an update on the Safer Grant, if it gets awarded to the county. I don't know if you're allowed to provide that right after I'm done, but if you can, uh, please do. Um, and one more thing I wanted to add is, um, I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about, um, a broader issue with gas prices. Um, and at the time, there was no conversation around it. Um, just wanted to update that this is something that is being called to be investigated at the national level, um, from folks that are in some of the highest levels of the legislature. Um, and so it's, I think that's an important thing to update because that could mean gas prices could go down in the future. Um, and even though there's no connection between me and DC, I'm still going to take a little bit of credit before it, for it, because I feel like I was right on the issue at the time. And so, um, just a quick update on that. But yeah, if you could let me know when the Safer Grant is going to be awarded, if we get it, uh, please let me know.
Thank you. Uh, any other citizen comments in the chamber? Okay, seeing none, uh, bringing it back to the dais. Just real quick, so if I'm, I can probably just, uh, if I'm not wrong, so regards to the Safer Grant, uh, there was, we're hoping that there's some kind of, uh, update somewhere around at the end of the, at the end of the year, around October, November. So that's the, the expected timeframe of when we might hear back, uh, about the Safer Grant. But then again, that could change because it's not really up to the applicants, but, but to the, uh, to the office. Okay? All right. Uh, next, uh, we have awards presentations and proclamations. Uh, item number one, uh, presentation by Mayor Moran, proclamation recognizing the week of May 12th to the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week and May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officer Memorial Day. So I'm going to read the proclamation. It says, uh, City of Livingston, proclamation, whereas in 1962, the Congress and the President of the United States signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which, in which the date falls as Police Week. And whereas members of law enforcement recognize their duty to serve the citizens of the City of Livingston by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas during Law Enforcement Week and throughout the year, the Livingston City Council recognizes and appreciates the critical contributions and sacrifices made by members of law enforcement at all levels and honors their courage and dedication. And whereas the dedicated men and women of the Livingston Police Department provide this vital Public Service Day enforcing the law and safeguarding the lives, property, rights, and freedom of every community member. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Moran, Jose Moran, and, and the Livingston City Council do hereby declare the week of May 12th to the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in recognition of their service given by these men and women who stand guard to preserve the rights and security of all citizens. Furthermore, the Livingston City Council calls upon the citizens of the City of Livingston to observe May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those fallen law enforcement of officers and those who become disabled in the performance of their duty and recognize and offer our respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And witness whereof I have sent my hand and caused the seal of the City of Livingston, California, to be affixed this, uh, fourth day of June, 2024.
Now, the internet is not good. The internet is not working.
Thank you.
If I may say something real-
Yes.
-in regards to that, I think it would be, um, a real honorable effort if we invited our law enforcement team to such, um, proclamations and events that we hold here in the council chambers so that they may receive the proclamation. I mean, we do have interim chief over there. If you would, I mean, if you're making the presentation, you, I would expect it be presented to at least our department that, uh, we're giving honor to. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, next, we have item number two. Uh, presentation by George Nazar, uh, Public Opinion Strategies, Livingston, regards to the Livingston Sales Tax Polling Update.
George.
Are you able to hear me?
George, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, fantastic.
We are on the first slide.
All right, perfect. Uh, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. Uh, one sec. All right, so I recently conducted a survey of the City of Livingston. We conducted the survey among 100 registered voters. The survey was conducted May 15th through the 22nd. Uh, we made sure to have a representative sample of the community, um, from everything, from ethnicity to age, to the different regions within. Um, and with that being said, we'll go, start going through the data. Um, if you can skip to slide three, please. One of the first questions we asked, we asked, generally speaking, do you think things in the City of Livingston are headed in the right direction? Or are they pretty seriously off on the wrong track? A majority of, uh, of residents in the City of Livingston said things are headed in the right direction. Uh, only 34% said wrong track. Uh, we also asked, do you approve or disapprove of the job the Livingston City leadership is doing? 59% approved, 27% disapproved. So again, residents in the City of Livingston are generally happy with the direction of the city, uh, as well as, uh, they approve of the, uh, job the city leadership is doing. Um, if you go to slide four, you can see a breakdown here. Um, and it's broken down by gender, age, ethnicity, uh, as well as party. You can see there's just general optimism on the direction of the city and approval of the city leadership across almost every single key group here. Uh, moving on, uh, to slide five, uh, we asked the question, do you agree or disagree with the following statement? The City of Livingston's government is responsive to its citizens. Uh, three quarters of, uh, of, uh, residents of the City of Livingston say the government is responsive. Uh, they do agree with that. Um, and while there is a lot of agreement, it's 70%, it is at 20% strongly agrees. So there's not a lot of intensity there, but generally, uh, residents are very, uh, they believe that the city is responsive to its citizens. And as you can see on the right side by all the different demographic groups, uh, this is, uh, uh, they agree across the board. If you go to slide six, we asked, which of the following issues do you believe should be the top priority for elected officials of the City of Livingston? Uh, this was the listed option. Uh, you can see there's not really a clear frontrunner here. Managing the city's growth and development uh, was, uh, at the top at 24%. Of residents think that's what the city should be focused on. Improving the quality of public education came in at number two at 22%. Fighting crime, legal drugs at 21%. Uh, and so of note, if you look at the younger voters, age 18 to 34, uh, the top issue among those voters is holding down taxes and fees. You'll see this is, uh, going to be relevant here uh, on this next slide when we talk about the sales, uh, tax proposal, because this is a group that is, uh, initially pretty hesitant for this proposal. Um, if you go to, uh, slide seven, uh, we said, moving on, there may be a proposal on the ballot in November that would raise the sales tax in Livingston by 1% in order to raise approximately $2 million in new revenue that will go towards the city's emergency response, primarily to increase staffing at the local fire department. If the election were being held today, would you vote yes or no on this proposal? Uh, when asked this question, um, residents in Livingston are split. 39% say yes, I will vote for that proposal. 39% say no, and roughly a quarter, 23% are undecided. Now, if you look at the right, at the key groups, um, you can see the breakdown. There are some partisan differences. Democrat, uh, largely, which represent over a majority of the sample here, say yes. They, they would vote for this first proposal. Republicans and independents say no. Uh, you can also see voters aged 18 to 34, they oppose, while middle-aged and older voters, uh, uh, either approve or are more split. Uh, on slide eight, we said, the county has, uh, notified the city that without additional funding, the county will close the fire station. I would like to review a couple proposals being considered to replace the existing county-run fire station. After I read each one, please tell me if you support or oppose that proposal. The first proposal we tested was that the City of Livingston creating its own fire department, separate and apart from the county. Uh, you can see there's widespread support for that proposal, 76% support. When asked, uh, a separate proposal, uh, a separate contractor outside of the county providing fire services to the City of Livingston, uh, much more split here. 46% support, 48% opposed. So you actually have a plurality who oppose using a contractor outside of the county. Uh, you'll see, uh, in subsequent slides that maintaining emergency response times, uh, is really important to, uh, residents. And I think that's reflective in the data here. Uh, they want to keep the fire department within, uh, close to the city. Um, you can see on slide nine, the breakdown of two different proposals by key groups. Uh, you know, keeping, uh, uh, the City of Livingston creating its own fire department has widespread support, no matter party, age, ethnicity, across the board, widespread support, while the, uh, uh, the separate fire department outside the county uh, is much more mixed among voters. If you go to slide 10, next, I'm going to read you some specific things which might be funded by the increase in the sales tax. Some of these may sound similar, so please listen carefully and tell me how important each one of these is to you personally. And so, they were read, these listed options of what the money from the sales tax increase could go to. And these are ranked in order of importance to residents in the City of Livingston. So coming in at number one, maintaining emergency response times of the city. 75% say that's important to them, including 40% that say extremely important. Fixing potholes, number two, 72% important, 29% extremely. Providing safety gear for firefighters, such as air packs, 71% important to them, 33% extremely. All right, and so, again, maintaining emergency response time is the number one. And as you saw in the previous data, when they had the option of having a fire department within the city versus it potentially being outside the county, you know, voters much, but much want it done within the city. Because maintaining emergency response times is clearly very important to residents of the city. Now, coming in towards the bottom, city beautification efforts, such as removing graffiti and adding additional walking paths and parks, that failed to get 50%. Of residents think that's important to them. Improving neighborhood parks and other public amenities also fell under the 50% threshold. All these other proposals came in over 50%. But again, some had more support than others. Again, maintaining emergency response times in the city being one of them. And you look across the key groups on slide 11, across almost every single key group. So basically, this is the data broken down by key group. Red means it's the top, most important issue to that block. So for example, among voters 18 to 34, which initially had some opposition to the sales tax increase, maintaining emergency response times is extremely important to voters aged 18 to 34. So again, maintaining emergency response times important across the board here. Slide 12. Next, I'd like to read you some information about this proposal. After I read each statement, please tell me whether it makes you more likely or less likely to support this proposal. So these are ranked by total more likely. The first one, and the one that tests the best, this proposal will allow first responders to have additional new equipment and tools, such as safety gear and communication equipment. They need to respond to emergencies faster, keep Livingston residents safe. 72% say that makes them more likely to vote for the sales tax increase, including 36% who say it makes it much more likely. Again, this was the top message across every single demographic group, no matter party, age, ethnicity. It was by far number one. And again, you see, need to respond to emergencies faster. You see that pops up again. And so, any kind of education efforts on this issue needs to be focused on that specific point, because that will be important here. We also included a message at a time when families are already paying more for everyday items, such as groceries and struggling to make ends meet. The last thing we need to do is raise taxes even more. And so, we did include some negative or some messaging that could be in opposition of this proposal. And if you go to slide 13, you can see, after message testing, this proposal goes from being completely split, 39-39, to actually reaching majority support. 56% supported, 31% opposed, with 13% undecided. If you go to slide 14, this is the last slide here, I'll draw your attention to the partisanship. And so, Democrats, they initially supported this. It was 52% support among Democrats. That support increases to 66% support. But what's important here is the groups that were initially not supporting this, Republicans, independents, and younger voters. And you can see opposition to this proposal is abated after the messaging. And so, again, after understanding more about this proposal and the impact it could have, especially on safety and emergency response time, it seems voters in the City of Livingston do favor this proposal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
George, thank you for that presentation. Counsel, are there any questions?
No, I think I had a lot more information that I thought I was going to get. And it kind of did mirror what we see at the national level everywhere, where Democrats tend to be more in favor of taxes and Republicans not as much. We get that, but also, what I was quite happy and surprised, not necessarily surprised, was that when it came to fire department, which was the main reason, there does seem to be overwhelming support, which I think it came out just about the right time with all the news headlines and everything. So it's really on people's radar right now. And people are not going to forget this that quickly either, by November. I don't think they're going to forget. It's still be fresh on their mind. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members? Any comments before I go off a public comment? Is there any public comment on the phone? Questions, comments? Here none. Let me go off a public comment real quick. Is there any public comment in the chamber or questions in regards to this item?
I just have a question. How many, well, two questions. One, obviously, this is all Livingston residents that were polled, right? And the second is, how many actually responded?
So this poll was done only among City of Livingston residents, and the poll was among 100 residents. And again, this was stratified based on demographics so that it has a representative sample by party, age, ethnicity, education level. And so, this is a representative sample of the city.
Thank you, George. Is there any other questions, comments in the chamber? Okay, bringing it back to Adias, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. George, appreciate the work that you've done with this item. I do have a question. One of the slides shows, and I think Monica can probably pull it up, where it showed the difference, if you go back one more slide, where you go from initial support to final support. And it appears as if there was a change in those that provided support once there was information that was provided to the survey individuals. Can you provide a little bit of context as to what is the relevance of this slide and what recommendation would someone, you know, glean from this information?
Absolutely, yes. So this is, this is showing initial to informed support. And so, what's very clear is, look, for initial support, none of support and opposition, neither of which is over 50%. And so, opinions are not really baked on this issue. But what this survey really demonstrates is, once you educate voters about the positives that would come from this, and it seems that they're really impacted by the emergency response times and the safety aspect of it, when they understand that, they clearly move to support. And what's important from the initial to informed is, you know, you had Republicans, independents, and younger voters, initially a majority opposing this. But after they learn more about this proposal, they actually, their opposition flips the support for this. And so, I think this demonstrates that with an education effort in the city on this proposal, it could, it would in fact pass.
One other question too. And you highlighted this in some of the beginning of the slides. There appears to be some language that resonates more favorably with residents across the board. And I think emergency response is one of them. If the city council made a policy decision to include language on the ballot, how would the information related to the keywords that resonated with the residents play into a potential ballot measure language that's provided to the voters?
Well, I would recommend that you include that in the ballot language, if that's possible.
So based on the presentation, and obviously, you know, a conversation for later on in the evening when we talk about some more of these items. But the things that favored more favorably, so for instance, maintaining emergency response times probably resonates a bit more than other things that were on the lower end of the spectrum, including, and I'm not casting any aspersions on any department, but for instance, the public safety element, emergency response times polled a little bit better than, let's say, language associated with improving beautification efforts or improving walkways.
Yes, that's exactly right. If you go to slide 11, you can see those ranked in order by how important they are to voters. And maintaining emergency response times and providing safety gear for firefighters is by far at the top of the list here. And that cuts across every demographic in the city.
So Monica is pulling up slide 11. And this is what I was referencing and what George made reference to, that based on the items that were conveyed, you see the top-tier items are those that are at the top. And then, the ones that polled a little bit lower are towards the tail end. So George was saying, you know, the relevance of including that information in a potential ballot measure, if that's what the council show, so chooses. Thank you, George.
Of course, thanks for the privilege.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments, questions, observations? All right, well, thank you, George. I think it was pretty clear and answered a lot of questions. So I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, George. On your page 10, those percentages there, do the, is that with the margin of error?
Yes.
So essentially, just the, well, okay, the bottom ranked. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Yep. Yep, so on slide 10, that is the total important. So these are ranked by total important. So for example, maintaining emergency response times in the city, 75% say that's important to them. 40% say it's extremely important to them. And so, those are ranked ordered, the top one being at the top, and all the way down to the bottom.
Were these questions just limited to just this? Because I think one of the things that would have been important were to see how many of those residents actually shopped locally. I mean, specifically in Livingston.
Yes, so these were listed options based on, yes, these were all listed. And so, it was not an open end. We gave them these responses and they reacted to them.
So like, if you asked them where they did their local shopping, they would have given you something specific? Or these were just, the questions that you have here were, is what you were limited to?
This is what I was limited to in the survey interim.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, once again, George, thank you very much for your presentation.
Of course. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements and reports. Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza.
Good evening, counsel. Well, I just want to start off with, I guess, you know, there's always been complaints about me not attending council meetings by a council member. I think that she forgot that a few years ago, they took me off the agenda for a whole year until this council got elected and you guys brought me back on the agenda. So it's now, it's very hypocritical to demand that I attend council meetings when sometimes there's conflicting board meetings or other meetings that I have. And, well, there's no obligation on my behalf to attend all the meetings, which I try most of the time to attend. And, you know, but I'm still available for the residents of the community by phone or by email. I'm happy to answer questions and to get back to you and, you know, whatever the need of that residence is. So I just want to state that. Also, about six weeks ago, or about three minutes ago, when I attended, the council passed a resolution or something regarding lights, solar lights. And I've been requesting also from the mayor and the council for it to be emailed to me so I can put it on the agenda and pay those fees from my discretionary funds. So I'm still waiting on those. Hopefully, I know it was about $31,000. So we still need to get it so that way we can, because I think by next meeting, I doubt that we'll be able to submit it by next meeting. But I'm still, I still have discretionary funds. With a new budget, I'll be getting another $40,000 plus. This last year was $40,000. I should still have funds to pay for those. But I need to get it so we can put it on the agenda and pay for that. So I made 17th, I attended the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, which is the San Joaquin train. And we boarded that one, San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. We went to, and we had our board meeting in Hanford, and in the city of Hanford. And we, like I said, we passed many resolutions and a lot of millions of dollars for the new tracks and trains. And also, the thruway bus, which covers across Hanford and the South Valley, which is a bus system, since they're not able to get the train across. So but at least it goes north to south. So hopefully, and that's also, San Joaquin's and the A train, with the state having budget problems, I know that, you know, the A train through Livingston, eventually, all the way to Merced, will might be delayed a few years. But hopefully, by, you know, by 28, 2028, 202030, we can have the station here in Livingston as soon as, you know, as possible and with the budget as well. So, and I know that there was a meeting, or I don't know if it was canceled yesterday, regarding negotiations with the manager and the CEO of the county regarding negotiations on the fire department. So hopefully, those move forward and, you know, so we can get that done and have the residents not fear that we're not going to have a fire station here in town. So that's all my comments for today. That's all my comments for today. There's any comments by the council? Okay, thank you.
So what I understand what you meant to say was that you are on the agenda?
Answering questions.
Yeah, you're on the agenda. Why didn't, it was agenda size. Why didn't you come?
Next, we have city staff announcements and reports. First, we have Mr. Mario Guevara, city engineer.
Brief powerpoint. So we have a few items here, capital projects and construction, as you know, well, 8A is under construction, and the additional water testing, water quality testing is scheduled for, to actually occur this coming Monday, June 10th, that's to, again, sample for arsenic and then come up with a strategy to move forward, addressing that.
It's not working?
Yeah, it is.
You want two?
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Capital projects out to bid, we have a couple of projects that are bidding, the East Avenue Storm Drainage Pump Station, which is by East Avenue, and it's going to be rehabilitated, it's in dire need of some improvements, that's going to be opening bids on June 11th. We also have for the wastewater treatment plant, the sledge thickener installation that's also out to bid, and will be, will be receiving bids also on June 11th. There's some water line work that Public Works will do that's to supply water to that area of the plant, and that will be done concurrently. There you go. Takes a couple of tries. On the water capacity assessment, we did receive some additional data from Public Works on April 30th with production data, which basically, the slower part of this table here is what shows that. I know it's really hard to read. For the presentation now, this is the results from the last year's, October, November, water system capacity assessment. We focused more on these now since the production from city wells has gone down some, and so based on that, the available capacity in terms of maximum day demand is in the negative, which is 572 gallons per minute. Used to be 22 here at the last one in November, I believe. So again, this is based on having the largest well at its service, and also based on the highest consumption for the last 10 years, which occurred in 2014. By the end of this calendar here, so in about six months, 2014 will drop, and the next highest water consumption will be 2015. When that comes about, you'll be about even, it's a 17 gallons per minute deficit. We also show here the actual consumption for 2023, so that's the most recent data that is available, and based on that, there's a surplus of 800 gallons per minute. Also, Public Works does have some challenges.
I'm sorry, Mario? Yes?
Oh, using 2020, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the A hero capacity, is that with the main well, the biggest well down?
Yeah, all of these are with the biggest well.
Thank you.
Out, yeah. So all of these are, it's using the same criteria, except that instead of taking the highest consumption for the last 10 years, it's the most recent one, so that's where that comes from. We had also done 2022 a little while before we actually got the 23 consumption, and it was even higher, it was like 1,400 GPM. So theoretically, you are upside down, you are at a deficit, and that's by water code.
I thought?
No, we're good. We're going to, you want to, well, have no way go through the private development projects and entitled projects and so on and so forth.
Yes, just to briefly discuss the status and the projects that are going to be, or are seeking permits for construction from the city, starting with the Terra Santa Bella's apartment. For that project, we're currently reviewing the improvement plans, and we'll probably expect a couple of more rounds of reviews on this one that I'm currently working on, and then probably a third one and final one. So once that is done, then they'll, they'll be asking for a full loan permit as far as construction. I know that, and Gary, I'm not sure if he wants to chime in, they've asked for initial permits at this point to do some of the prep work, but eventually, they'll be asking for a full construction permit here shortly. Then, Munglo Truck Stop, for that project, we have, we have approved their plans, and this was a while back ago, six or eight months ago, but they haven't proceeded with permits because they're still trying to comply with some of the conditions of approval, mainly getting some Caltrans approvals that they need for the nearby interchange impacts, and then they're also working on cleaning up their lot line adjustments, and then I know that recently, we, their landscaping plans were approved. Then, next one, La Padilla Auto Body Shop, that's a little commercial slash industrial project that is being proposed off of Front Street by the east of the Liberty Market Center, and that is basically a little shop that is probably going to have a, or will have a toilet and a sink, but it's mainly for car repairs, the project. Then, B Street, they did submitted plans back in January, which we, or February, which we reviewed and sent back with comments. They haven't resubmitted since, but we're probably expecting a resubmital on this project here shortly. And those are the entitled projects that are currently seeking permits. We do have other projects that are either in the planning stage or pre-application stage or that are not, that they didn't necessarily needed entitlement, but are moving forward with the building permits. And for the pre-application projects, we have the Maverick Service Station. I know that a few weeks ago, we had a conference call with the applicant and their engineers and Gary, and there was discussion about the water issues, the water concerns, and how they would address those in terms of providing infrastructure within their, within their development site to mitigate concerns. So that's ongoing. I know that Gary is working with them on the environmental documents and so. And then there's others that are currently in the pre-application phase. Then for building permits, we, since this presentation was repaired a couple of weeks ago, we were aware of two ADUs, the ones listed there that were, that were seeking permit for water connection, but now since, I know that a third ADU has come up and a single-family residential that was approved a few months ago off of F Street, 1547 F Street, I believe is their exact address. They're probably going to be seeking permits as well in the last, or resurfacing the last week or so, is the AAA Truck Wash. That project, their plans were approved over, probably over a year ago, and I know that one of the things that they were working on was coordinating with Merced Irrigation District in terms of constructing and timing the irrigation seasons. So not sure what else has held up the project, but at this point, it looks like they're resurfacing the project to move forward. With that said, those are the projects that we wanted to highlight.
There you go.
Any questions?
Or whoever wants to answer on well 8A. You said we're nearing testing and so forth for the, not the well, but the testing of the water, correct?
Quality.
Yeah, the quality testing. So if, if the quality is acceptable, we don't know what we're going to find yet.
Right.
Because have we ever done an initial test already?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's the ones that came, the test well was fine, and then the production well showed some elevated arsenic, and then we tested it again, and it was even higher, like two months after that, which is very unusual.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to, so if, if it tests even higher, you know.
If it's still very high.
Is it possible to abandon that area and then go somewhere else in the city? Because it's going to add a lot into the filtration cost.
It's, yeah, you would have to fill, you know, treat it for arsenic.
I understand, but if water is somewhere else in the city, we have kind of rough ideas, you know? Would it, does it delay it a lot to go somewhere else, or how does that happen?
Yeah, because the well is actually already constructed, so it's already.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
So it's already in the ground, and it's very close to well eight, you know, the one that's going to be abandoned? And even though it's so close, the water quality data is quite different, which doesn't make a lot of sense.
And that's what I'm confused about. I mean, normally, you will see some variance, but.
It shouldn't be significant.
Not that, not that way.
Correct.
Especially when they're so close to each other.
Correct.
You would think it's part of the same aquifer, part of the same.
It should be, yes. So now we're going to do targeted, very small interval testing to see if we can identify.
What is the, what is the depth of the eight?
I think it's around 300 feet.
And 8A?
It's about the same, they're very similar.
Heck, I would think that at a different level, you might get different result, but.
Right, if you had gone to.
It's kind of confusing.
Yeah, if you go down to, say, 500 feet, which some wells are like, then you're prone to get a lot of salts and a lot of, you know, bad things.
Thank you, that's, okay, thank you.
So we'll see what comes out. We should know within maybe two or three weeks, the results.
So following up on regards to the same well, so the well is already done.
The casing is in.
Casing.
Yes.
Okay, what is the cost so far for that work up to this point?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's several hundred thousand dollars, probably half a million dollars or so.
200, 700, roughly, I don't know.
Probably half a million dollars, probably half a million dollars.
So about 500,000?
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Okay.
The whole project is, I think, 3.8 million.
Okay, so about 500,000 has been invested in that project?
Don't quote me on that.
No, no, yeah, I mean, just for conversation purposes. So have we thought about doing a cost analysis to compare versus, yes, we have spent this amount of money so far, less, if we abandon it, long-term process, long-term planning, because in 10 years, if we continue with that well, how much is, how much is it going to cost to, to, you know, to have it working versus 15 years or 20 years versus, let's look, if we look for other areas, yes, we, you know, and what is the potential of having to draw another well and not having to do a water treatment for TCP and then, and then become less expensive, you know, in 10, 15 years? Is that something?
TCP you'll have to do, because all the wells have, this is for arsenic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that or some, or another chemical, I mean.
So other sites were evaluated, well 18 site, which is just right down the road, and that's one of the sites, well 19, which is towards the west, that's also on, is planned to have a well, so there's those two. We looked also at, by Arcalian would probably be the next area that would probably be suitable for a well.
Yeah, I believe originally, there was a well at Arcalian.
There was a well number 10.
And it was abandoned because of arsenic.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe, you know, it would be, I wouldn't mind, and then again, I don't know if it's too costly to do some kind of, put some numbers together, other alternatives, other options, and then, and then I know that, that, you know, all of those wells' options are on the north side of the freeway, you know, but have, or could we consider other areas on the south side of the freeway? And then, yes, there's going to be a cost to kind of like, well, let's, we got to move water to the north side, you know, so I don't know. I'm just thinking if I could see some other, you know, Plan B, C, or.
Sure.
You know, just.
We can do that.
I don't know, is that possible? And then again.
It's possible, yeah.
I don't want to.
You always want to have wells as close to a treatment plant, as, you know, as close as you can, that's why well A is where it's at, because it's close to well eight and close to the treatment plant that's already there, so it's just going to be a matter of expanding that. So now the issue is not the TCP, but the arsenic.
Yeah, so basically, we're just adding more vessels for arsenic to the current TCP, correct?
Correct, yeah, which, those are already planned, because you know you have TCP. What didn't show in the test well was arsenic.
So if we're going to abandon eight, which we know we are, we're going to use the vessels from eight for the 8A?
8A, yeah, it'll be for 8A, 18, when 18 is built in nine.
Okay, thank you.
So you mentioned that probably we would have, or you would have results from the additional testing, I don't know, roughly two weeks.
Yeah, within the month, for sure.
Yeah, and then, so what would be the next step?
Say that again.
What would be the next step, once you get those results, then you provide those to the council or to the city, or what's the next step?
We make the city aware of that and then recommend moving forward, whatever alternative we feel is most suitable. But we can evaluate other, if the city is willing to abandon that, that well and go somewhere else and do another test well and start from the beginning, you know, we can certainly explore that.
Okay, so maybe at that time, it would be a good idea to come back with options.
Sure.
With alternatives. Or alternatives. And that way we can save some time instead of. Thank you. So let me go out for public comment or questions from the public. Is there any questions or comments for the presentation on the phone? Coming back to the chamber, any questions about the presentation?
All right, just one quick question. On when you're thickening the sludge, I'm assuming then it gets hauled off. Is that considered, is considered hazardous waste, like comes out of a car wash?
No, it is not.
It's not hazardous waste?
No. And maybe Anthony can speak more into what, how that sludge gets handled as far as disposal?
Yeah, the solid, the solid waste at the wastewater treatment plant is treated. And once it's dried, it has to go through vigorous testing called wet testing by the state. The state required testing. And whatever results we get from that testing will decide whether that material is a hazardous material haul off or non-hazardous materials haul off. And it's just a question of, of how expensive is a haul off? It's considered hazardous and we has to go to a certain landfill. If it's not, then we could send it to any of these landfills and have it land applied, which we normally do.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments in the chamber? See, now I'm bringing it back to the dais. Council, any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, guys. Next, we have John Ramirez, Acting Chief of Police with an update from the Livingston Police Department.
Good evening, council. So I just wanted to give a quick update on our operation that we had last Thursday, May 30th. And I know some of you have seen the, the news and read some of the articles on Operation Red Rooster. So this was about a, really, probably almost a three-year investigation that originally was spearheaded in Livingston, probably in about 20, 2021, regarding a murder investigation that we had and an attempted murder case that we had. So without getting into too many details, it was a successful operation. As you all were aware of during the press conference last week, there was over 41 arrests that were made. I believe over 60 pounds of narcotics, including fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamine, and 27-plus guns. And a lot of ammunition was located. There was also, not mentioned at that, at that time, there was a storage locker that was filled with illegal fireworks that we also looked into. But it was a, it was a good day. It was a very lengthy investigation. A lot of great work was put into it. You know, like I said before, it started with the Livingston Police Department case and the investigation team did a really good job. One of the, the key things I mentioned during the press conference was just talking with investigators, you know, years ago, and just talking about the possible case of this magnitude and coming to fruition. And truly seeing it that morning, like I mentioned, was really amazing. You know, coming into work at 5:30, knowing what was gonna happen in about 30 minutes, because we had a, a time that we were gonna serve the warrants. And there was over two dozen search warrants that were served and half of those were in the city of Livingston. So as most of you, you know, woke up at six o'clock or 6:05 and I believe there was two helicopters and an airplane and SWAT teams all over the city that nobody knew about, which is obviously for safety reasons and, and take, you know, keeping the case tight-knit. But I just wanted to kind of give you a quick update on kind of how all that went down and just, I know, again, that's, it's been in the paper and the, and the, and the media. Unfortunately, I can't really answer a lot of questions. You may have questions and, and I can try to, try to take them, but the cases are still under investigation. So there's a lot that I can't divulge, although I'd, I'd like to, because you'd be really amazed on, on how the whole operation worked and just the details that were put into. But the work that was just, you know, and like I mentioned also, the, you know, serving 24-plus search warrants is gonna take a lot of manpower. There was no way that Livingston Police Department could do that. You know, the county has a lot of resources as well, but usually anytime you have a, a case this big, you're gonna need other agencies to assist. So there was, you know, probably 15-plus agencies that assisted all the way up to Kings County, Series PD, that helped with the warrant. So again, I just wanted to give a quick update and send a special recognition to the investigators that were involved in this with the magnet team, Merced Air Gangs Narcotics Enforcement Team.
Yeah. So I, and thank you to, to everyone involved, because everyone was involved, you know? And as you mentioned, agencies as far as Kings County, you know, but it also, it's a good opportunity to showcase, I mean, not to showcase, but to demonstrate the work that continues to be done by your department, you know? A lot of times, it is sad that when a tragedy happens and someone gets killed, you know, those family members, they, they, they want justice quick and fast. And sometimes, you know, a lot of times it's not that fast, you know? There's a lot of things that have to be done. And, and some cases take years. And, and this is one of them. And, you know, but, and then again, I don't know how much of the, how much of this was, or how much of, of the information was also being done by the public, you know? But obviously, it's, 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 it's always helpful to have assistance from the community, you know? And it's always good to have people doing neighborhood watch, you know? Because that's how some, you know, the best thing is to prevent rather than to having to have an investigation on, on something that happened or someone that got killed. But, you know, to, to those families that suffered the tragedy, I think it's, you know, some, they're, just to let them know that something has been done all along, even though it's hard to say, this is what we're doing and this is what's happening and stuff like that, you know? And here's the result. And I know that it was, there was a big concern in the community of what's going on and are we safe and all of that, you know? But thankfully, nothing else, everybody was safe. No one, no one got hurt. And just also an opportunity to say thank you to all of the agencies, because as you mentioned, it's, it's, especially with something this big, this large, you know? Whatever comes out of it is, is because of the teamwork and effort and, you know, everything that was done that day.
Yes.
Yeah. So, cancel?
Yeah, John, just a quick question, only if you can answer. During the press conference, it was revealed that they started with the homicide, like you just stated. Was it the homicide on Walnut? Or was this, which one was it? Are you able to say that?
I, I can say that over the last three years, I believe we've had, we've had a few shootings, but there has been two homicides. It was pretty much regarding both of those and even some cases prior to that.
They were tied together?
No, no.
I'll only say what you can say. I want to.
Yeah, there was, the many shootings that we've had over the last several years, this investigation surrounded the majority of those. And information was gathered throughout this investigation on other stuff that we're still working on.
Yeah. And then again, you know, I, like the mayor said, you know, it took multi-agency to make this happen. You know, I was surprised that it was not only local agencies, like you said, Kingsburg, but even the feds were involved.
Yes, FBI, DOJ.
Yeah, there was a lot.
Homeland Security also.
Yeah. The, the only bad thing happened was Officer Rin 1010 got somebody else, remember, from Kings County? Officer Rin bit Lassie, moving people. I don't know, I don't know. I'm trying to think of a new police dog, but you know.
Yeah. And I, and that's one thing that I, I stressed at the press conference that, you know, is not stressed enough. You know, we tend to make headlines when officers do something wrong. But in this case, you know, out of 40-something plus arrests, you know, there was a, a minor, minor injury by an officer, but no suspects were hurt, no officers were hurt.
Yeah. So you know, the injury of the officer was by another officer, right?
Yeah.
And it was a dog. So just so you know.
Yeah.
But thank you, guys. And I was really impressed with all the work and, and I'm glad that it helped resolve a lot of issues in town, too. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think it will. But, you know, if we, we still say if anybody sees any suspicious activity, always, you know, notify us, let us know. And I think, you know, one of the, the bright moments of that latter part of the morning was being able to call the victims' families and let them know that we made arrests. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Ramirez, I think this would be a great opportunity, maybe, you know, to also share or ask the community of, you know, I do appreciate when they reach out to me and probably to the rest, some of the other council members about concerns and stuff like that. But can you share of how important it is for them to be able to call in, even if it's through the non-emergency number? And, and, and how you, you are able to figure out what areas of the community need additional, maybe patrolling and, you know, just, just that, that thing that goes behind the scenes that, that most of us don't know or that community doesn't know? And to stress the importance of people calling in.
Yeah. So, I mean, when, when you think about it, there's, you know, we're not just sitting in front of your house or on your road. I mean, it's, it's a pretty big city for two or three officers to be patrolling. You know, the officers do take breaks. They do reports at the police station. So it's not like there's 15 cops driving around. So they need to understand that there is gonna be a delay sometimes. But it is important to call and, and we will show up. I know that sometimes that's a concern, that if we call, they're not gonna do anything, they won't show up. Well, we do show up. It may not be as you're sitting there looking out the window, but eventually we will show up or we may get diverted to a priority call. But it is extremely important for them to call. Not only, not only for that, but for evidentiary, you know, when somebody calls in 911, all that's recorded. And if we're having a third party call in with information, it's kind of a little bit hard sometimes if, if we're getting misled information. So I think getting information directly from the person that's witnessing the crime is, is pretty important, because as everybody knows, what, you know, lost in translation is, is a big issue. So definitely giving us a call, letting us know. We're never too busy. It is our job to enforce the laws and we, we will get out there when we can. But if they feel that they're not getting the service they need, they, they definitely need to call in and talk to supervisor as well. And, and that can be, you know, simple explanation of why maybe the officer took longer than expected and whatnot. So.
Thank you for that. And also, I want to take the opportunity, I know that I, I attended the Officer of the Year Award Ceremony. And, but I think I also wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you and congratulations to the officer for, you know, I understood that the process of how they get selected, they get selected by the peers. So is that correct? Is that how?
Yeah, yeah. So this, this past year, I actually sent an email out to the whole department. I mean, because I could have my own opinion, but I'm not really out there with them, you know, on every single call. So I, I did send an email out and I wanted to get feedback from all the peers. And, you know, the officer spoke and the supervisor spoke. And, you know, we were able to name Alejandro Perez as Officer of the Year. And we did have a ceremony last week and she was given her award for her, her efforts throughout the community, throughout the year. And something she should be really proud of.
Well, just, once again, I mean, just, just let her know and that we're very proud of her work. And I had a very good comments from the community. Some of the comments were like, you know, she listens and the way she speaks to the, to the people, they appreciate that. And, you know, one of the comments was like, I hope she doesn't change. And I don't think she will. But, you know, just that goes to speak that it's just not you guys that are seeing her work ethic, but also people in the community. So that, that means a lot.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Next, we have City Manager announcements and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items on my side. Thank you, PD, Officer Coleman, Interim Chief Ramirez, for all the work related to Red Rooster. I too did attend the Officer of the Year Award. So congratulations, Officer Perez. Had a chance to spend some time over at Music in the Park last week. Jackie doing incredible work with that. Had a really good time there. We do have a couple of employees that are expecting babies in the next handful of months or so. So congratulations to them. And then I didn't mention it, but I think it was in May, we had our employee appreciation barbecue, which was a great turnout, amazing event. Many thanks to the Employee Recognition Committee that put everything together. I think it was a fine time had by all. So thank you very much to everyone that continues to support. Come together and work super hard for the city of Livingston. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Next, we have City Council Members Announcements and Reports. Councilmember Soto?
Just a few things. I did spend some time at the senior center. When they're open, they have their, their luncheon. Had some conversation with some of the folks that do attend. It's about a handful of people. One of the things that they did say was that they were happy to be relocating and I, and I wasn't aware of that, that decision or discussion. So I did reach out to our city manager. I did receive an email from a resident in regard to the reasoning of the, when they were looking, a request for a city manager to go out and look for another one. There were some concerns in regards to that. So I addressed that and said, I, I find no real reason. Christopher's doing a really good job spearheading and with his leadership for the city of Livingston. But since then, she, this person has, hasn't received any response from other members of the council. I've also spoken to some residents in regards to the sphere of influence, their concern and as we speak about the general plan. Something I want to put on the radar in regards to VFW Post A327. It is Flag Day next Friday. So if any of our residents have flags of American flags, POW, MIA, Blue Line, Red Line, any branch of the military, if they are tattered or torn, you can drop them off at the VFW by, I would say Thursday, next Thursday evening, so that we can properly retire them. So Flag Day next Friday. Also, a comment in regard to having questions for people that are gen- gendecized for our meetings. So it may be a matter that you, somebody wasn't on the agenda, but we're here advocating for their buddies, such as the previous city manager, and advocating for a failed recall. So the presence was here, but not in the. So the presence was here, but not in the capacity that it should have been, as was the comment for tonight and an unanswered question that went out to say that, why don't you come to the meeting, you are agendasized? So if... And I recall last April that the comment was made that you don't have to answer my questions, you'll answer to anybody else on the council except for me. So that's what it appeared for tonight's meeting. So I just want to comment on that. So if you are not here acting in the capacity of the District One Supervisor, as you were tonight, and refuse to answer my questions, I understand why. And that's all.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I believe we're getting some visitors soon. Can we get an update on that, sir?
On the Sister Cities delegation?
Yeah, is there an update on that or?
They're confirming, and so an invitation was sent out. But yes, right now, it looks like three of the, or at least representatives from the three delegations will be here. We're still getting an update on who's that going to be. But that should be available, hopefully, by the end of this week. But there is going to be some kind of representation from those, from the Sister Cities delegation, yes. Next, I have a very brief report, just a couple of things. Like I mentioned earlier, I did attend the Officer of the Year Award. Once again, congratulations to Officer Perez. And yesterday, I attended the HLC Senior Dinner Graduation. It's something that is normally done every year for the HLC members at Livingston High School. And it's a very intimate graduation where they get to invite their parents and their family to their ceremony, and it's normally done two to three days before the formal graduation, which is going to be on Thursday at Livingston High School. And once again, attended the Music at the Park the previous week on Tuesday. I was not able to be there yesterday because I was at the HLC graduation, and that's it. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items in the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote, unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items shall be limited to three minutes per person, regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So we have items three, four, five, and six. But at this time, I'm going to go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to any of the items in the consent agenda? Here and none, coming back to the chamber.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On item number four, I just have one question. And then I had a question for the Chief of Police that I would like to ask that I didn't get a chance to earlier. But on item number four, I know what it is, I know it's a second reading. My question is, why, what's happened to the three applications that were turned in prior to that? One in February, I believe, two in March, to the Planning Commission? I use an old army term, did somebody pigeonhole them so that these people haven't heard a word back in over ninety days? I'm just very curious, because one of those applicants is in this chamber tonight that had put in for the Planning Commission. So that was my one question. And the other question for the Chief of Police real quick was, are we selling fireworks on the third and the fourth and the fifth this year? All three days, or just the third and the fourth? Because our celebration is the fifth. If you can expand on that, if that's been decided yet? Thank you, Chief.
So according to the ordinance, on July 4th at ten o'clock is when fireworks sales will stop.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments in regards to the consent agenda items in the chamber? Seeing now, bringing it back to a diaz at eight thirty-five. And just real quick, in regards to those applications for the Planning Commission, should be coming on the next upcoming agenda. So, Council?
Motion to approve the items three, four, five, and six on the consent?
Just one moment, please. Item number five, I know that's going to be a later discussion. Item number seven. I'm thinking that we need to have the discussion for item seven before we approve item number five. Is that legal?
Sure. So item number five is our legal mandate to do the notice of the upcoming election. So that's separate from item seven, which is a discussion on whether to bring the ballot measure to remove those two positions from being elected and making them appointed. So item five is meeting our statutory requirements for the upcoming November election.
And we're presenting them a notice as an elected position, city clerk and city treasurer in item five.
Yeah, we legally have to because currently that's the required process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or motions? So we currently have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem to approve. Is there a second? I'll go ahead in second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Semra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of three, zero.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and potential action items. Item number seven, discussion and direction on submitting a ballot measure at the general election regarding changing the positions of city clerk and city treasurer from elective to appointive positions.
Thank you, Mayor. So over the, probably the last seven or eight months, the council had robust conversation related to the positions of primarily the city clerk and the responsibilities of that position. I believe it was in, I think, December 5th of 2023, the council adopt, did adopt a new ordinance that specified the roles and responsibilities of the city clerk position. Prior to the ordinance being adopted by the mayor and the council, the responsibilities, roles, and duties of the city clerk were found in the state code. On the December 5th, 2023 meeting, the council directed staff to explore the opportunity to go to an appointed city clerk versus an elected city clerk. During that discussion, which the council posed to staff, which we have brought back with an answer tonight, the council posed the following question. What would happen to the newly elected city clerk since they are up for reelection on November 2024 if the citizens agree to make the position appointed instead of elected? And the answer to that question is, the new city clerk would serve out their term of four years, as would the treasurer. After that, there would be no more elections. So Councilmember Soto brought up a really good point. The council just adopted item number five, which was the calling of the election. Based on whether the council decides to have that go to the voters, there still would be an election for that. They would serve out their term, and then after that, there would be no further elections. With that being said, if the council does choose to put this forward to the members of the public, then we would bring back a subsequent resolution that would call for that election or for this item to be on the ballot at a future time. So with that being said, Mayor and Council, happy to answer any questions with respect to this item. Tonight, we are seeking direction on whether the council would like to bring this forward to the voters of the City of Livingston. What we have done, I'm a firm believer in not having the council surprised with any sort of resolutions or any sort of ordinances. What we have done is included a draft resolution so that it's not the first time that the council would see what that resolution would look like, when the council is being asked to vote on it, if that's what the council decides to do. So with that said, we have included that draft resolution. City Attorney and I are happy to answer any questions, should the council have any. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so can the council consider, so right now, the conversation is to, for council to consider moving from being elected to being an appointed, and it would be appointed by the council. What would be, is there an option? And do some other agencies have no elected or no appointed city clerk and city treasurer?
What I would say is, is the vast majority of public agencies no longer have elected city clerks. There are still a few out there, but because of the complex nature of the position and the level of expertise and work that goes into it, it's currently, the common practice is it's staffed by a full-time individual at the city level. So most of, and because of that, that most cities and counties are, you know, obviously, you have the clerk of the board, which is the same as the city clerk, have converted to appointed versus elected. And for that reason, because you're limited in what you can pay an elected official. They're limited in the amount of time they usually have to devote to the job. And given, you know, nowadays, the complex nature of the Brown Act and things like that, most jurisdictions have moved to appointed.
So, but could we, can this council consider neither, not appointed, not elected?
Unfortunately, no, those are really the only two options allowed under the government code, is either it's an elected position or an appointed position.
Okay. Council, any other questions, comments at this time, before I go out for public comment? So at this time, nine, eight forty-two, go out for public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on the phone? Here and none, coming back to the chamber. Any public comment on, in the chamber?
Am I allowed to ask any questions and get response right away? Or, okay, so curious to know exactly what the city clerk does at a high level because I know it's not a, they don't vote, obviously. There's five people that are voting, but they are elected, and so why would they be elected if they're not voting? Like, what is the nature of, like, why that position is so important, before I go anywhere else?
So for cities, your elected city clerk is the individual who is designated one for service of process if the city sued. So they're the only person that can receive lawsuit or complaint. They attest to all, they attest to all resolutions, ordinances. They aid in the preparation, the maintenance of records, the authentication of records. They're really kind of the gatekeeper to most city functions and things that happen in the city, including your municipal code and making sure that it's updated. It's a, they're responsible for certain budgeting items and keeping track of budget materials. It's very detailed in the government code, the kind of extensive responsibilities of the city clerk. But kind of in a nutshell, that's, you know, kind of a gatekeeper for all the administrative functions of the city.
Okay, and so right now, we are electing, and so you had mentioned, when you were responding to Mr. Moran, you had said that when you're elected, there can be limitations on time and money that's put into the role. And so is this currently not a full-time position?
It's a, it would be based on how much time the elected city clerk can devote to it. So there, there's no set minimum, no set maximum. As far as salary or stipends goes, those are set by state law. And there's a little bit of flexibility, but not, not much on the amounts that a city clerk can be paid. And off the top of my head, I don't know, I'd have to look to see what the current state limit is for the city clerk. But I do know that's fairly low.
Yeah, in City Livingston, the elected city clerk is a hundred dollars a month.
Oh, wow, okay. Okay, so general opinion on this? As a matter of principle, I like the idea of elections, just people get to choose. Especially when you're doing appointments, I think you made a great point two weeks ago that it needs to be fair, right? And that's up to the council on what's fair and what's not, at the end of the day, what they end up doing. But if this is something, obviously, there's very important work being done, there needs to be time, and I don't think a hundred dollars a month is enough for that. And so if that could be a full-time position going forward. I like the idea of appointment, assuming that it's fair, that it's done properly, and you're getting somebody in the role that is doing a great job and also getting compensated fairly for it. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
How are we doing, Council? I think that this agenda item is, it's on the agenda, I think is ridiculous, it's, you know, political. Mr., for a little bit of history, Mr. Campini was on here for twenty-five years as city clerk. All he did was come in and swear people in, and there was never a problem. After that, I think it was Martha Natares. And then Mr. Campini, I don't know, remember if he made twenty-five or fifty dollars, and then he got moved up to fifty, to a hundred dollars. And then Mr. Tony Silva served as a city clerk for many years. But as an elective position, it's a hundred dollars. With inflation, it's nothing these days, you guys can bring it back to fifty dollars or twenty-five dollars. I don't think it's the money. You know, if there's any issues with an election, people can vote for them. You know, I think that this position is, not that it's not a big deal for somebody. Obviously, somebody wants to do a good job and represent the community, but it's an elective position. But just to be discussing this, I think it's ridiculous for the council to be entertaining because somebody's complaining about, you know, whatever, if their job, they're not doing their job or not, is just, you know, ridiculous. And if this position moves to appointment, then this council, whether it's political or not, they can be removing that person just because they don't like him or whatever, or if they have the majority. It's about continue fighting. This shouldn't be on the agenda, it shouldn't be in the discussion, whether it's city treasurer or city clerk. That's just my opinion, okay? So thank you.
Any other public comments in regards to this item? Seeing now, bringing it back to the chamber at eight forty-eight. Council, questions, comments? Suggestions, how to move forward?
So with this, this discussion, I know that it's been brought up several times in the past, and it stems from the previous city, elected city clerk and our current elected treasurer. And we do have both our current appointed and our deputy up here doing the work. So take a look at Catherine, for example. How many years did we not receive the treasurer's report? However, she spent time posting things on Facebook while being paid maybe that a hundred dollar stipend by the city as our elected without doing her job as required by the government code? She took the money for those three years without doing her job. Same thing with our previous elected clerk, Letty, whereby she refused to do the public minutes. minutes as required by law, and all to hide shenanigans, the mayor and the accomplices. I see, leave the positions elected, that way the state of California can come and hold these people accountable. It's the only reason that Catherine is now doing her job and the reason why Letty resigned.
Anything else, Council? Direction, suggestions, recommendation? So unfortunately, there's, there's not an option to not have either one of them. Like, we need to have one either elected or appointed. So, or if, and if legal, what happens if there's no direction at this time? It's just, it's just...
If there's no direction at this time, it can always be raised again at another time if Council so chooses. At this point, even if the Council were to give direction to bring the item, the resolution for the ballot measure, the, because the election is this year, for the city clerk and city treasurer, they would still get, you know, get the benefit of their elected term. So it actually wouldn't go into effect until that term ends in four years. So the city has for, you know, three years, basically, to decide or else they would be, sorry, three years to decide or else to be back in kind of the same situation where we're now, where if you enact it during the election year, the cycle would go again for another four years.
Got it. Okay. So Council, so if there's no direction, then we can move on to the next item? All right, moving on to the next item, item number eight. Discussion and direction on submitting a ballot measure at the general election regarding a potential revenue measure.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is being queued up. Just a brief presentation on this, we've talked about this pretty extensively over the last few months. I would really like to thank the members of the Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee, Mayor Protem Samra, as well as Councilmember Roth. This is item eight, discussion and direction on submitting a ballot measure at the general election regarding a potential revenue measure. This is a slide that's been repeated before, goes back to fundamental issue that's going on in the City of Livingston. Merced County has informed the city that it will need to contribute $750,000 to accommodate additional staffing needed at Livingston Station 96. The new staffing levels are because of directives from Sacramento and the absence of $750,000 from the city. And without the SAFER grant, the county will close Livingston Station effective October 1, 2024. The last signed agreement between the City of Livingston and Merced County for fire protection services expired in 1995. The city is currently desiring to partner with the county on the submittal of a SAFER grant, which has been submitted, which would fund additional staffing needed at Station 96 for a limited term. And then finally, a new sales tax measure may generate additional opportunities for the City of Livingston to enter into its own agreements with neighboring fiery agencies, develop its own fire department, or other alternatives. So background, on February 7, 2023, an item was brought forward to the City Council for staffing augmentation at a cost of $399,903. That item was pulled from the agenda that evening by previous management staff. On March 7, 2023, Merced County informed the city that it would need to provide $750,000 of funding for the staffing. The city was provided a memo from Cal Fire regarding changes of the minimum staffing level with no justification for the increase from $400,000. The Council appointed Mayor Protem Samra and Councilmember Roth to a Sales Tax Ad Hoc Committee to explore funding services for the additional staffing needed. Earlier this year, the Council authorized polling the community, which we heard from George Nassar earlier today. And then on May 7, 2024, the county recommended and adopted the closure of Station 96 effective October 1, 2024. So key dates that are relevant to this discussion in February of 2023, the initial staffing augmentation cost was $399,903. In March of 2023, Merced County informed the city that it will need to contribute $750,000 in funding to keep Station 96 open. In August of 2023, the Council appoints Mayor Protem Samra and Councilmember Roth to the Sales Tax Ad Hoc. In February of 2024, at the recommendation of the Ad Hoc Committee, the Council approves an agreement with public opinion strategies to poll the community. In May of 2024, Merced County authorizes the closure of Station 96 effective October 1, 2024. In May of 2024, Public Opinion Strategies conducts the polling. And then tonight, the Council and the community receive the polling results from that poll. So what did the poll show? This is some repeat of what George talked about earlier tonight. Voters are split on the ballot proposal with a quarter undecided. No, a majority of Democrats support it, while all other parties oppose. No issue clearly dominates, but managing growth, improving education, and fighting crime are all bunched at the top. There would be broad support for the city creating its own fire department. If Merced County closes the fire station, there is split, there is a split on hiring a contractor. The city creating its own fire department is supported across the board. This is clearly the more popular option. And then finally, the top item voters want prioritized is maintaining emergency response times, followed by fixing potholes, safety gear, and keeping the fire station in Livingston. City beautification items fall towards the bottom. So key policy items that are conveyed in the staff report include a general tax versus special tax. In its simplest form, a general tax can be used for any municipal lawful purpose, which requires a 50% plus one voter majority approval. A special tax lawfully can only be specifically spent on the items set forward by the Council. That does require a 66.67% voter approval or a supermajority. Sunset versus no sunset. Having a sunset means that for a brief amount of time or a limited amount of time, the city would be able to collect that additional sales tax. Having no sunset means that it could essentially go on into perpetuity. Some cities that have put sales tax initiatives to voters include language requiring the formation of a citizen oversight committee that's appointed by the Council to ensure that whatever items are being expended at the city level have some sort of oversight done in addition to the Council, with also a citizen oversight committee. Audits, whether it's a general tax or a special tax, if it's a general tax, it would be audited in the same way as general fund revenue. That may be language that the Council may want to include. And the initiative for a general tax, since it is a general tax and it gets audited with the rest of the city's revenues, there is an additional layer of review that a city can do, and that's called an agreed-upon procedures review that's done by a separate auditor. They will provide an extended or in, more in-depth review of expenditures of revenues and ensure that, based on sampling that's done, ensure that the revenues are expended in a way that was put forward by the voters or approved by the voters. Citizen oversight is included there twice on accident. And then finally, public education. You heard George earlier today comment about, once initial respondents were asked about ballot measure, you saw what the likelihood of supporting that ballot measure was. Once there was some education that was put forward about what the funds would be used for, you saw that there was quite a bit of shift in support for that, the tax measure. As conveyed in the staff report, there are a number of items that we are seeking Council direction on. The first one, does the Council wish to direct the City Attorney's Office to develop the necessary documents for a potential sales tax measure to appear on the November ballot? If so, does it wish to be a general or special tax measure? Thirdly, if yes to one, does the Council wish to retain a firm to inform and educate the public on the potential sales tax measure? I'm sure Roy can talk about more extensively, that the city can't necessarily advocate or campaign, but it can certainly educate with city funding. Item number four, if yes to one, does the Council wish to have ballot language crafted with input from the polling consultant, George Nassar, and the City Attorney's Office? We will want to make sure that if the Council directs item number four, that we're doing everything lawfully and that we're not creating a potential special tax if the Council directs a general tax. The length of term for the ballot measure for the sales tax, sunset versus no sunset. And then finally, any other items from the policy discussion areas, including citizen oversight, additional levels of financial review, and anything of that sort. Finally, I will state that the Council can choose not to proceed with this item. In the absence of this measure or any other new reoccurring revenue, the city will not be able to sustain additional expenditures for fire services beyond the use of its emergency reserves for a short period of time. We did include sample resolutions and sample ordinances in the backup material. We did that not to get approval or adopt those items, but purely, we didn't want the Council to see those items for the first time if the Council was being asked to adopt them at a future meeting. So they're just included as reference and for discussion purposes. Mayor, that completes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
So I do have a couple of questions. One of them, what is the traditional or the most common-use timeframe if, if, if a resolution or if a tax measure is considered? Is that 20 years, 30 years? What is, is there, is there more common?
I, the, the most practical approach is in perpetuity. The reason that that is so important is because with the sunset, you've got a finite period of time. So essentially, you run up to an issue of having to do it all over again in the future and creating another, you know, potential chaotic situation in the future. We know that there isn't funding for this fire services in the future. So my recommendation would be in perpetuity on a go-forward basis.
Okay. Council, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, first of all, we're gonna know first, around September, if county's gonna be successful in getting the SAFER grant, around September. And even if SAFER grants are given, I believe they're for three to four years, something like that, it's not 100% for four years. It's each year, it decreases a percentage of the funding for, that we get. So even if SAFER grant is given, it's gonna expire, but call for more money is gonna be within a year. You may make that first year, but second year, we still gotta come up with it. Now, as far as the proposals, I understand, and we are both, we all saw the presentation, that once the people were educated on the purpose of the survey into saying that this will be for a services or fire service or something, people were more willing to support it. However, if we put that language, and I'm just looking for help from everybody, if we put that language that this money is for fire services, it increases the threshold for its passage. Now, if we do a general tax, it may be lower, but then are the residents gonna see that as a tax, or is it for a purpose? So there is a, yeah, do we call for a special tax, say it's gonna go for fire services and increase the threshold, or do we go for general tax and then people not understanding? So I think that needs to be a discussion amongst us. Yes, I'm sorry, Chris, or, or, turn, Roy. The general tax is 50.1, 50, 50%, point one vote. What for the special tax, how much is that, what was that threshold?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. That's about six, yeah, 16% increase. So what, that's something, you know, we, the survey kind of gave us something to think about. So we're gonna have to, I mean, I'm hoping that we get some sort of feedback on how that would work. And I understand that city can't, like the city manager said, it can't put, it can't advocate for any passage, but it can educate. So now, what we have, and I'm just posing questions for discussion here, if we say this is for general tax, will there be enough faith and trust from the residents, says, yeah, that's what they're gonna use it for? Or they're gonna say, yeah, they're educating us, but six months from now, they have something new with it and not for the fire service? So how, that's what I'm, I'm kind of dealing with. So maybe somebody has something, suggestion, I would be willing, of course, I would entertain it. But one thing I am for is regardless of we put in a general tax or a special tax, that we definitely put this on the ballot, you know, one way or the other. We just need to come up with the language for it at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll comment a little bit later after everybody's spoken.
Thank you. Any other comments before I go out for public comment?
I, I can agree with what Mayor Protem has stated. I would definitely want this on the ballot as a special tax measure, but seeing, we did only poll 100 people. However, from that 100, after they were educated on what it would be used for, it swayed them more towards, favor, favorably for the, for the taxes. And I believe if this Council and prior councils, when we say that we want to head in the direction of having our own fire department, fire services, then we are gonna take it seriously. So whether it's general and we come up with the, the language that helps support that, so that the voters see that, that the, well, I would, I would say the 2 million needs to go to fire services. So that's why I lean more towards that special tax. So that's mine on that. And then regarding the sunset versus no sunset, with the state coming down with, with two O staffing, within another year or so, it's gonna be three O. So with those things in mind, and with Livingston expecting some more growth, I believe that there shouldn't be a sunset on it.
At this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to? Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this item? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any public comment in the chamber in regards to this item?
Getting all my steps in here tonight, Mayor and Council. I agree, you've gotta do something. We gotta get something on the ballot. The general, on general tax, easier to pass, but that's not what I got from out of what George said during his presentation. They want fire department, they want more public safety. It's just that higher threshold. I think it's gonna be up to the council. They've gotta go out and you've, we've gotta have, you gotta get people involved, you gotta be out explaining it to them, what, what's at stake, no matter which way you go, but one of them's gotta be on the ballot. And I'm afraid if it goes in the general fund, five years from now or three years from now, someone's gonna say, well, wait, why did we vote on that? And now you want it, you used it for everything but the fire department and the police department. That would be my biggest concern on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Consensus with everyone about keeping it as a special tax measure?
I do have a question. So if we end up collecting more from the tax than we actually need to spend on fire, what happens with that extra money? Does it have to sit and eventually be spent? And so let's just say staffing never, oh, actually, I'll just go ahead and answer you.
Yeah, for any enterprise funds, which would be a special tax, it has to sit in the enterprise, enterprise fund and can be only used for that specific purpose. So if, I'm, it can't be, I mean, there are some limited exceptions. Typically, it must be spent on that. Sometimes you're allowed to borrow from your enterprise fund to pay for things in the general fund, but then you have to repay that amount plus interest. So typically, it must sit there until something else comes to fill from that allotted category.
Right. So anything that's over, if it continue to be over year by year, just keep stacking year by year? Okay. There's a, a point in here about, do we want to retain a firm to inform and educate the public on potential sales tax measure? I don't know how much that costs. I don't necessarily think that's something that we need. Like it's just on the looks of it, it doesn't sound like we need a firm to go and talk to the residents. I think a couple of visits to churches, temples, Goldore, et cetera, community events, like door-to-door is something I'm planning on doing at some point. Like, I just feel like that could be something that's done. I don't know what time looks like for you guys, volunteer efforts, open to all of it, but I just don't know if we need a firm unless there's rules around how you need to educate. Cause I'm sure there can be biases that go into that. Um, just one thing I wanted to point out before I end, because it's on my mind right now. And the damage has already been done, so that's okay. But we're looking at about a million dollars right now, right, that we need over, give or take, or 750 is what the number was to staff?
That's what the county is asking us to pay in addition.
Right. And so we need to cover, even if you rounded it up to a million, I'm really vocal about being engaged in broader scale advocacy. I mean, I did wanna point out that the state of California, a couple months ago, released an audit on its homelessness spending, $12 billion that were put into homelessness. And they had essentially no answer for where the money was or what was going on with it. And for context, if we needed $1 million for our fire station, that is 0.00008% of 12 billion. In other words, one in 12,000 of what that budget was. And I know we're in a budget deficit, we can't just get anything into the budget at this point, but to pretend that the state could not support this at some point or has not wasted a huge amount of money that could go into things like this is just false. And so just looking forward when it comes to funding things like this, always an option.
Thank you. Any other sort of comments?
I think, you know, I would support either a special tax or a general tax, but I think right now, it'd be more easier to pass a general tax, which would include fire, public safety, or, you know, whatever needs to be done. Because like I said, with inflation, public, you know, and downturn in economy, I think it's gonna be harder to pass a special tax. So I'd be willing to support whatever you guys decide and knock on doors and hopefully we can pass it. And right now, with the community upset that it might lose its fire station, I think it's a, a great time to go and talk to people and hopefully they'll support this, this tax. So like I said, we all need it, we all need to support fire and, and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A question on the 750,000, is that per year? That's per year. And then have, has anyone or will there be an analysis done on, is, will it be cheaper to pay that 750,000 per year to the county versus having to run, the city running their own fire department? What would cost more? And then I think on your numbers over here, I think it was 12 billion that, that the governor appointed for homelessness and they don't know where the money went. But there was one other, well, I forgot. Anyways, the main thing was what would cost more, giving the 750,000 per year and will that increase over years, of course? And then would it cost less for the city to run their own station?
Yeah. Just so you know, Julio, that 750 is under 2-0 staffing. When state goes to 3-0 staffing, it'll cost even more. That's just to, for now. So look at it, it's costing us about 750,000 more. And if they go to 3-0 staffing, it'll be at least, at least minimum that, if not more than that, for the third staffing. So.
Thank you.
Just wanted you to know.
Thank you. And I know, I don't know if anybody's brought this up, but this fire department is one of the busiest in the county and I don't understand why they don't look into that.
Yeah, you know, maybe you wanna take a trip over to M Street, third floor, maybe they can give you some answers. I can't get any answers from them.
District supervisor might have that answer.
For me?
Hold on, having, let me, having closed the public comment.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. Is there any other public comment in the chamber? All right. Bringing it back to the dais, 917. And then just also for clarification, that 750,000 is in addition to the $1 million plus some other additional costs. So it would, if, continuing with what they're, what the county is asking for CalFire to be here, it's, I think it's a two-point, is it just, is the million dollars plus a 750 plus the additional cost that it's, that is costing for us to keep the, the station running, right?
Correct. So as far as we understand, there's about a million dollars in fire parcel tax revenues. It's a portion of the Livingston residents' property tax assessment. So it's that funding plus the 750 for those items, Mayor.
So it's more than just the 750, close to 2, $2 million, what they're asking for a year for 2-0?
That's just for 2-0, so.
2-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I kinda agree with Rod and I think most people would. If we, a council as individuals, not as a representative city, go out and talk to people and say, this is for the fire station, yeah, then I think meeting the 50% plus may be an easier than a 66, because I got a feeling that economy's gonna take a little dive and people are already stressed out enough that we may lose that additional support. So it is, I'm, I'm not, to me, I would say, go for the general tax. We have to work hard, wear down some shoes, tell the people that's what we wanna do. And then don't have the provision for the sunset and then put on the ballot, I don't know how it can be worded, that there will be a oversight committee. So that way, it'll be oversight committee, so people can say, hey, this is not one. There's something along the lines when we did a measure for Livingston School District, Bond B, I believe, or Measure B, I believe, one time ago. People like the idea of there's a oversight committee, that it's not just a political decision, it takes more people. So that is just kinda, I'm thinking out loud, but of course, there's two others. I would love to hear from others, too.
So I do see the benefit of, of having something for, specifically for, for fire safety. And then also because, I mean, the city's gonna need that continuously to be able to keep up with the staffing. So, and yes, there might be some people that not, might not be very trusting of, of how some of those funds might be used, but then again, it's, it's, those funds are gonna, the cost of running a fire station are only going, are only going to increase with, with inflation and with time. So the big question is, do we want to go out for a special tax that requires a two-thirds, right? Or a general tax that requires only 50% plus one vote? And, and I do believe that it's gonna require more than just us volunteering and going knocking on doors, cause, you know, a lot of times, people get really excited and, you know, people don't volunteer as much as people think, you know? It just doesn't happen. I mean, cause I think I've seen it more than once, more than enough times to where we need, we might need an additional help. The same thing happened when, you know, when the previous grant for the, for the recreation center and stuff like that, you know, cause I might, of course, I will volunteer, but you know, how much time do I really have every day? So then again, just part of the conversation, but. Counsel? So Roy, in, in order for this to move forward, you, you need to have, we need to make a decision prior to July, right? July 7th or 9th for, for the county to have this?
I believe so. I'll double check with Monica, but we would basically need to bring this back at the next council meeting.
For approval or not?
Yeah.
Just, just in order to, to be able to?
I believe to meet the county timeframe, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I know we're just giving direction, we're not approving anything. I would like to, and hopefully I have support here, is to go for the general tax. Go for the general tax and then put a committee, oversight committee, and then also to retain it for, a firm to help educate people. And no sunset. So I'm just giving direction, I know we're not voting, so if anybody agrees to that, I think we should move forward.
I agree with almost all of it, but I think we should have both options coming back for the next meeting. That way, council member Rod can also provide that input. And then if we, if we decide to go with, I mean, whichever way it is.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
One of the things I'd also like to see, the more we speak on the general tax, I mean, it's an easier sell, so to speak, to the people if they're getting what they need out of it. But for us as council, are we, say, we were to say, we want 90% of those funds, the money, the revenue coming in from that, from that tax to go to fire services and then whatever the other top three items were that were, it still had to do with fire was the response, keep, well, if we still have fire services, response time would still measure out. I don't remember what the other tops were. But a certain percentage is allocated towards services for that general tax instead of a special tax. I don't know if that was a question, was that a?
Can you rephrase that? You could, you confused the heck out of me there.
So if it were a general tax, can we put a percentage that went to fire? Cause if we do a special tax, all of it, we're wanting to say, we want it to go to fire services. General tax, are we able to say, hey, we want this amount, 90% of the, the funds to go here?
We just specified it ought to be a.
So typically.
Anytime you take percentages, you just made a second threshold.
Yeah. Typically, what you can reference, if you want it to stay general, is you can reference generally the, the categories of items that the city would intend to spend that money on. But when you start doing the exclusive categories, then you're getting in the realm of a special tax and you would go into that, that separate threshold, you're effectively creating an enterprise. Can the city come back after the tax is approved and in a meeting with the public decide that percentage of that revenue that it wants to allocate? It can do so at that time.
So I'll, I'll add to that, another part of that, which is really interesting, talking about this special versus general. The city council, and this is just an extreme as an example, and I wanna make one thing clear, too, this isn't the city council approving the sales tax, this is putting it to the voters to decide that. One thing that I will say is that if a general tax was proposed to the voters and the voters approve it, the city council is the one responsible for allocating those funds in the budget. So theoretically, the council could take that general tax, get those revenues and allocate it 100% to fire services. That's the, the interesting nuance here. It's really the general tax gives the council the most flexibility, but it could allocate it as it deems necessary during the budgeting process.
So I think the important part here is the education. And while we are in discussion with county with our fire services and we have up until, well, the end of the month, up until November for the safer grant or even sooner, I think really going out to the public, and I for one, regardless of the time that some may say that they don't have to do this, our obligation to our public, to our residents is to ensure the health and safety. So I would be one to go out and educate, you know, from, from a script, so that, or even from my heart, that we do need these services in place and this is where the money is going to, this is what the money would be used for, so that should be put on a ballot. They would know when it came before them that many of the residents at this point have already said that fire services are very important to them, extremely important according to the 100, the people that were polled. But right now, I believe that we need to act on this and put it forth to, to our voters.
Roy, does that give you enough direction to bring it back to, cause basically that's what I heard?
It does.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will add one thing. There's one item that I think the council wants to make sure is included. If you look at item number four, in terms of the language it's created, utilizing the polling information that was gleaned from the polling to craft the ballot language, I believe that's what the council wants, correct?
Yes.
We'll, we'll add that.
Okay, perfect.
Does, is that a, at another cost? I know that we've already put out 13.
No. All the information that they've been providing, the presentations is all inclusive of the funding that has been allocated. So no new funding towards that expense. inclusive of the funding that has been allocated, so no new funding towards that expense. So I did see the three head nods, I believe. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we have item number nine, discussion and direction of the entertainment for the Fourth of July event and receive an update.
So Mayor, I know since the last council meeting, there've been multiple ad hoc committee meetings. I know we've got Julio here and we've got Councilmember Soto here, obviously. So there is information that was included in the backup of the agenda item today. Earlier today, I did send a link to a folder with all the documents that the group has been talking about. I did send that to Commissioner Wallace as well. Happy to answer any questions as far as, I know the answers to them, Mayor, but it does look like, I think Councilmember Soto would like to say something, but that's the purpose of this item, Mayor.
Actually, I'd like to invite Julio Valdez to the lectern to provide us a more thorough update. Thank you.
All right, so I provided that thorough update already via email. What questions do you have?
If you can share with the public.
What, pardon me?
Your PowerPoint?
What questions do you have? I don't have a PowerPoint.
So there was, there was questions that, that were unanswered at the last meeting. I know that, that we participated in an ad hoc meeting to the council, but I don't, well, actually, I don't, Mayor Potem was not there and Councilmember Roth was not there. So you sent in a report, a proposal, a proposal and then a budget report, right?
Yes.
But only part of it was able to be included in, in the, in the agenda. So out of the proposal that you created, I created, I created a slide presentation so that people in the community know what the, what that information was. So, but some of the main questions, I think they might be answered in this presentation, this live presentation, but there were, if there are additional questions, I think that would be a good opportunity to provide those answers.
Sure. What, who has that presentation?
Yeah.
Is that, and who's going to present it? Oh, me? Okay, sounds like, sounds like the meeting I went to last night. All right?
Do you want to come over here?
Sure. Let's see. All right, so we'll go, this is the plan, so on Thursday, July 4th, the carnival by, will run by itself and no entertainment, nothing else going on. We did talk to them, they may close early if, if it's slow, but that, that would be up to them. On Friday, July 5th, the, well, actually go back to Thursday, the hours that we proposed were 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM for the carnival, and this is based on previous history where nobody shows up early because it's really hot. July, the first part of July is one of the hardest parts of the year. So same thing on Friday, 5:00 PM to 12:00, the gates open at 5:00, entertainment starts at 5:30, the, we have the rhythm blenders at 5:30 to about 7:15. Keep in mind, there's always a little bit of room for the schedule to change timeframe. 7:30 to 9:50, Valley Cats Band, and then 9:30-ish to 10-ish, more than likely less time than that fireworks show. So Friday is the day of the fireworks show. 10 to 11 would be a local band or DJ. And same thing, 11 to 12, a DJ only, or DJ. On Saturday, July 5th, again, the carnival will run from 5:00 to 12:00, the gates open at 5:00, it'd be a car meet with DJ music and then we'll have local bands and, from 7:30 to 11:00, and then 11:00 to 12:00 AM with DJ. Sunday, July 7th, we do open earlier, Sundays, even though it's hot, the, this would be a most, a Spanish day and, and most Hispanics, once they're done with church, they go out somewhere, so, even if it's hot. So we would open the gates at 3:00, 3:30 to 5:30, there'd be a haripel. 6:00 to 7:30, a band, Los Jefes del Valle. 8:45 to 10:15, Banda los Fantasmas. 10:30 to 10:45, Los Primos de California, and gates close at 12:00. Wait, 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 go back, let me go back. The gate, okay, so Sunday, our hours were, would be less, so we were supposed to have been finished by 11:00, so that, that, I probably made a mistake on that. So 11:00 PM would be the, the closing time on Sunday. And the last band would, would start at 10:00 and end around 11-ish. So that, that we need to adjust, but it would be, 11:00 PM would be the gate closing time on Sunday.
Question, Julio.
So yeah, that was my mistake.
Quick question, on the haripel, you have the schedule of 3:30 to 5:30. Is that something that could be like moved a little bit later, like, so it's not like too hot or, I don't know, I mean, I don't, is it like?
Yeah, we can move it later. Yes.
And then, and then, I think there's a, there's a, a map, a diagram of, with the Is there a plan to have like grandstands for people to be able to?
No, no grandstands, but bleachers, yes.
Bleachers, okay.
If that's what you mean, yeah, bleachers, whatever the city has available, we would move them around there. I did submit that plan, the maps as well to, I believe to you and, and the city manager and whoever else, emails I had. And so that was to be shared with everybody else that needed it. I did put in the email if, if the city manager would forward it to anyone that needed that information. So yes, so the plan for the haripel would be in the middle dirt section like we did the, the, the last time, the last time, I think it was before, 2019, I think, or after, I don't remember, but we did a haripel there that one time as well, and it's in the middle section after the food court or the basketball courts. That would be where the haripel would be.
And then, I'm not sure if it's still part of the plan. At one time, I heard that, so it was, so now it's going to be open to the public, right? There's no, no entry fee?
Yes, there's always, it's always open to the public, but what, what you mean is, will it be free admission? It's free admission all three days this time, as we didn't get like a big, you know, we didn't get a big name artist this year, so, you know, there's no fee. There will be a parking fee and that, part of that, the explorers will take care of the parking, the Livingston Police Explorers, and they will get part of that as well. But those are the fees, the, the fees, and then people buy their bracelets, which are available now for, so at City Hall, for the carnival, which, which runs from the 4th through the 7th.
And then, and then also, and, and the initial plans are somewhere, I don't remember exactly where, if there were going to be no quote unquote entry fees, that there was a possibility that, that there might be requests of, for donations as people were, is that still on the plans or is that?
Yes.
Is that?
No, thank you for, for bringing that up, yes. The, the plan is to ask for donations at the two entrances. There'll be an entrance on the back parking lot where the general parking is in the dirt lot, so, and then there'll be an entrance for people that walk in and park elsewhere in the front area on Walnut Street. So yes, we will ask for donations at the, both entrances. So we'll have to have some type of containers and then, I know Happy is going to be picking up all the money, so thank you, Happy.
Okay, because I think I heard it somewhere, I just wasn't sure, but I, I didn't see it in the plan, so I was hoping that it wasn't, you know, that way, you know, like you mentioned, we don't have or there's no big, big name other than the rodeo that a haripel, and maybe this time it could be just, you know? So then, because otherwise, then you got to have people that are collecting the money at the gates and then, and then, you know, just all of the logistics that it takes to, whether it's $10 or $1,000, it's just a responsibility of having at least two to three people at each location and then having someone that is going to be collecting those funds and then depositing and stuff like that. So, you know, I, I was just thinking, and I, so since I, I didn't see it, I was thinking that that was no longer part of the plan.
If we want to change it, that's fine. I, I was just trying, I was thinking and seeing how much we can recuperate back and put it back in the city funds. So it's, if you, if the council wants to do that, that's, that's fine with me, let's work for us.
Because if we have, if, if there's three entries or three gates.
There'll be two.
Two, so two, you would have at least two staff members at each location and they're probably, probably going to be on, on overtime, so there's going to be an additional cost to have those city staff members there. And then probably three, because you need someone to be rotating and giving them breaks and stuff like that. So whether, you know, so there's going to be a cost, is there going to be enough or, you know?
Yeah, it might, yeah.
I was just thinking.
In the past, I think there was, you know, city staff, I mean, I honestly don't remember. I know that, you know, Happy in the past was in charge of collecting all the money, which worked out good for us, because that, we, he controls it and he, he, he does a good job of, of, of keeping everything straight, let's say.
And then.
So how it happened in the past, how my recollection, recollection of this is, is that there were three entrances, because we had people walking through the roundabout, being dropped off, and they walked through that entrance, plus the park, the dirt parking lot and the, oh, parking was taken at the front. You're right, two entrances, sorry. But I don't, I don't believe that we're going to be paying staff to collect those funds. I mean, nobody mans a jar at the gas station when people are asking for donations.
I would want someone, a city staff member to be at, at the entrances if we do that. That way, again, it's, everything is, is, you know, I, I don't know what the right word is, but so that way, everything's under control.
Keeping it honest.
Yeah.
Keeping it honest, I mean, I, I'm all for that as well. I mean, people are going to be manning those entrances.
But you, and we'll have security there as well, so, but if, if you guys say, let's not do that, I, hey, it's better, it's better for, for us, we have to look for less people to, to man the, the entrances, so.
Counsel, any other questions?
By the way, I did not account for that in that budget I, I had sent you guys, so. So it was not on there, so maybe that's also another reason why you did not see, think we were going to do that.
And I think one of the ideas behind that was that I did mention that we would ask for sponsorships or donations, so whether I said that that was going to happen at the event directly or if that was going to go out to the community for our places of, of businesses, seeing how we used to have sponsors that would help out and give donations to this Fourth of July event. So either way, I don't remember the context of when I, of how I said that, whether it was donations and sponsorships from our local businesses or surrounding cities, communities.
When I brought that up, I, I, I said I was not going to have time or was not going to go out and ask for sponsorships this year. If there is people interested in doing that, they're welcome to do it, take it straight to City Hall and make it out to City of Livingston for the Fourth of July festival, that's where the checks should go. If it's anyone that's interested in, we will give you credit for it during and before the event.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? This time before I go off a poll comment. So at this time, 9:45, I'll go off a poll comment, is there any questions on the phone? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any questions, comments, suggestions? Seeing now, bringing it back to the dais, 9:45. So I'm not sure, is, is in the, in the, is, in the presentation, is the budget included? Do we know?
This presentation?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Oh, shoot, wrong thing. Yeah, it ends, oh, I guess it was. I didn't go far enough, sorry. I thought it was done. So yeah, I'm, I apologize, I guess the thing was not working when I clicked it. All right, so yeah, here's the expenses. Do you guys want me to go over each one of them or we good?
Well, that would be primarily for the people online.
So go over it?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll go alcohol license is $75 per day, it's $250. Social media advertising, $1,500. Newspaper or magazine advertising, $1,000. Radio merchet, $2,500. I did forward that contract over to the city manager today for radio merchet advertising. Friday entertainment, rhythm blenders, $1,200. Valley Cats Band, $3,000. Saturday entertainment, the car meet would have $500 for awards, then local bands, and again, this is a, a, it could be less, but this is what we put. So local bands, $500, $500, $1,000 for the main lo, local band, and then a DJ, $500. The Sunday entertainment for everything, including the haripel and all the bands, is $12,500 and that's to Ricky Ricardo, who we worked with in the past. That contract was supposed, were you, city manager was supposed to put a contract together for him. I, I did send you the rhythm blenders, no?
So I, I don't have a proposal of what we would be paying for, for the Ricky Ricardo entertainment.
I sent it to you via text that day at the meeting, when you asked for it, but we can, I can send it to you again. So I go, I'll go back so I can tell you, the rhythm blenders contract I sent to you as well, Valley Cats Band I sent to you as well, they, you know, they need to be signed and so we can send them back to, to the bands.
The one thing, one thing I will say, and I did mention it during the ad hoc committee meetings, is that we've got standard form agreements that we utilize, whether it's music in the park or other groups, that's why it's so important to just have that information so that we can get it over to our legal team to make sure that insurances, all of those things are provided. So I do have them, I have a couple of them now. I just need that full scope of services with respect to Ricky Ricardo so that we can embed that in the template agreements that we do have.
So, yeah, so we can go ahead and, and talk about that tomorrow if you want, so we can get, get the ball rolling. Band riders, it's $1,000. Band riders are normally, if they need special instruments or special mix box or something on stage, most of these bands are just small bands, so they, we're not going to need much, so that, that may not be used at all. DJ for, for three days, I have $1,500. Sound, sounding stage, it's soundstage, lighting generator, $8,500, that's for, that also, I sent that invoice over to the city manager. Portable restrooms, Jackie helped with this, that's $4,068. Temporary chain link fencing, $2,913. Canopy rentals, I didn't have, I, I estimated that at $2,500. Security guards for all three days and overnight, $7,392. Beer that we're going to purchase to sell. Beer that we're gonna purchase to sell, $3,500. Water, soda, $1,000, ice, $500. This is one where I can use your guys' help, Maria, see if we can reach out to Foster Farms, they usually used to donate a trailer of ice, so if someone can reach out to Foster Farms, we might not need that either. Water, food and water for the explorers, we usually provide that to them, they work hard, they're kids, and it's gonna be hot, so $500 for food and water for the explorers. Missalanes is for decorations and so on, and if we do purch, when we do purchase anything like that, we do provide the receipts to the city. So this is more, this is a different, it's, it's the budget that I, I use, but everything is right here in expenses. This, this one here would show, oh geez, how do you use this thing? Thought I was an expert at this. Okay, so I'll just, where did it go, geez? Oh, it's changed a little bit, I see, okay. So expenses total is $58,815.74. However, we expect about $44,800 to come back, which shows that the city will ultimately pay, and this is estimated on that side, we will put actuals that should be close to this once we're done, but, so the net cost to the city, it's gonna be about $20,000, because money will come back, for example, the Carnival Company gives us a percentage, and we're estimating about $20,000, which is low, but, you know, it's the first year back with three days. And then vendor fees, when we collect the fees from the vendors, is $18,000 that we get back. And then beer sales, water sales, we do have one sponsorship, which is the beer company, Donagey, and they're gonna do $1,500 made out to the city of Livingston. So that's what's projected, so again, final cost to the city should be about $20,000, and not the full $60,000 that was approved. But that's, again, an estimated, could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less, but that's where we're estimating that.
I think that's the end of it.
No questions?
Good. All right, so I think I already went out for a poll comment, so, okay. Counsel, any questions? So this item, so just discussion and direction? Or? Mr. Lopez?
So Mayor, based on the item that is before you, one thing that we are asking is Julio provided information related to the Ricky Ricardo expenditure. That does require the counsel to approve, because it is above $10,000. We are looking at direction that would essentially direct us to go ahead and move forward with the processing of an agreement, subject to form from the city attorney, and then authorizing me to execute that agreement to move things forward. Otherwise, we're left with only having one council meeting, being the June 20, June 18th meeting, to have that executed, approved by the council, and then move forward on that. So time is of the essence, and so we are seeking direction on that, and more particularly, does the council wish to authorize the city manager's office to execute an agreement, subject to approval from the city attorney's office, for not to exceed amount of $12,000, $12,500 Fourth of July, Fourth, 2024 entertainment? And then, does the council wish to authorize the remainder of the July Fourth events as presented in the budget? So those two items are what we're seeking for tonight, Mayor.
Also, before we move forward, and I forgot to, I just remember, insurance, just to clarify, insurance is not included in that budget, cuz I didn't see it, and I think I did ask you, and then.
Originally, I had $2,500 or $3,500, but then I was told the city was gonna provide the insurance, so I took it out.
So typically, what we do, and this is standard language in our agreements, and I know we've talked about it, is that we've got insurance requirements, that we require of vendors and performers in our template form agreements. It is required under the RMA. In addition to that, we get additional insurance for these types of special events that provides some additional coverage, just because of the complexity of some of these events. There are recommendations that the RMA has, based on the potential risk of things going wrong, we never anticipate those things happening, but we're always prepared in the event that those things happen, and so they do recommend certain policy limits be placed on our vendors and contractors whenever we have these types of events. It's what we did for the carnival, it's what we do for the circus, it's what we do for the various events that we have. That's all standard language that we have, that's approved by the city attorney, that we do provide to our vendors, Mayor.
So in this case, so the city does have some kind of insurance coverage, but there's always the requirement of that additional insurance from vendors. Like the carnival, they are providing their own additional insurance for, besides what the city has, so what about the different performers that are performing at the different days? I mean, do they need?
They, can I say something about that? So, so the Carnival Company, obviously, everywhere they go, they provide a certificate of additional insured for whomever they're working with, so this, in this case, it would be the city of Livingston. And so they, they'll do that, they provide a certificate of additional insured. The Haripel, I had mentioned that Ricky Ricardo gets the insurance from Javier Fuentes, which is a local insurance broker here, Farmers Insurance, and he mentioned it was about $1,500, which was below what I had projected in the budget of about, I thought, originally, I believe I had $3,500, because Haripel is higher risk to them, but not to us. So that one, normally, we would ask them to add the certificate of additional insured for the city as well. Vendors, we asked them to provide insurance in the past, we have asked them to provide insurance in the past. So like food vendors, and even the other vendors, we, we had asked, I don't know what the city does for the Sweet Potato Festival, or for anything else right now, so if that's what they require. For bands, I've never, we've never, in my, what I do, I've never asked them for insurance for themselves, but we do put some type of a policy, if you, you're, you're performing at your own risk, and, you know, if you lose, if any of your items are lost, it's, you know, we're not liable, so we do that, but we don't ask them for insurance. But if this, if the city has, like the city manager said, something that is in place, then we follow that. If that's what they do at Music in the Park, and Sweet Potato Festival, and then everything else that they do, we follow that as well.
So then that means there would be a certificate of additional insurance needed from Ricky Ricardo?
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
It might be him, or whoever the, the Haripel people are.
All right, so so just for clarification, we need to approve?
So the, Mayor, if I could, the two items that we're seeking direction is to prepare the agreement, subject to approval from the city attorney's office, for not to exceed amount of $12,500 for the entertainment. So that's the first item, is the council want to direct us to develop that agreement and bring it back for approval. The second item is the balance of the items that were presented in the overall work plan, or overall plan for the Fourth of July. There's a number of agreements that need to be solidified, whether that's security, whether that's the purchasing of fencing, whether that's the purchase of, fill in the blank, porta potties. As has been presented, providing direction to approve that work plan, and move forward on me executing those agreements to get everything situated for the event.
All right, Counsel, what is your wish? Motion, suggestions, recommendations?
I'd like to see that staff move forward on both items one and two.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Roll call, council member? Soto?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of three, sir.
Next, we have item number 10.
Thank you, Julio.
Consideration of a resolution adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. The GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 24, 25, and infrastructure work plan, staff recommendation, approve resolution.
So I wanted to start off this conversation by thanking Happy, as well as the rest of the leadership team in preparing this document. The number of meetings, the number of discussions, I can't thank everybody enough for coming together and providing this to the mayor and the city council, so Happy, thank you very much, and the entire management team, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, staff, attendants, staff in, in the audience. So today, we are gonna go over the 2024, 25 proposed budget. You, as were presented, the budget at the last council meeting, hopefully, you had a chance to go through it. I am gonna go over the same proper presentation as we did last time, if you guys have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if we've already seen it, do we need to see it again?
I don't, I don't know, if anybody in, out in the committee, he needs you.
All right, okay.
Mayor, I will say that we added the infrastructure work plan, which is, if the council wants to skip over the financial component, we're certainly able to do that. There is a component related to the infrastructure work plan that is a priority for the council. We can certainly move to that if the council desires.
All right, let's go ahead and do that, cuz Mr. Samra wants to go to sleep. Well, me too, me too.
The important thing is what's in this book, anything else, and we've all seen it.
Good evening, Council, members of the public, Anthony Chavilla, Public Works, I'll be presenting the infrastructure work plan. I know that council understands what a capital improvement program is, but for those that may not know, a capital improvement program, CIP, is a strategic plan that outlines long-term investments and projects required to improve and maintain the infrastructure of a business, city, or organization, it serves as a roadmap for identifying, prioritizing, and funding essential projects that enhance the quality of life for residents and employees and stakeholders. At its core, a capital improvement program is designed to address the ongoing needs of the entity's physical assets. These assets can include buildings, roads, utilities, parks, and technology systems and more. The purpose of implementing a capital improvement program is twofold, to ensure the efficient functioning and longevity of these assets, while also meeting the evolving need of the community and organization. By developing a comprehensive CIP, the city can proactively plan for necessary improvements, rather than reacting to emergencies or unexpected failures. This proactive approach helps minimize disruptions in operations and reduce costs associated reactive maintenance. And as I said earlier, this infrastructure plan is gonna be the backbone, or the building block for a, a comprehensive capital improvement program. First year, I'll go over is anticipation of project completion, what projects we have queued up for the next three years, first one is water. As you heard from, from engineering earlier, well eight is in progress right now. It's in construction. Anticipated completion is at the end of fiscal year 24, 25, but as you heard from engineering, that's dependent on additional well sampling. I did put a placeholder in there for 25, 26, and again, that's depending on sampling results. Next project, group of projects, the TCP, Phase Two and Three, that's well 18 and well 19 with wellhead treatment, that's included. Just to remind the council and the public, TCP Phase Two, that is inclusive of the Arkalian centralized TCP treatment plant, with wells 12, 13, and 17 being piped to that regional plant, with the installation of a storage tank as well. TCP Phase Three is inclusive of additional GAC vessels for TCP treatment expansion at, at existing well eight right now, and piping 918 to that, that extended TCP treatment plant, with installation of a storage tank as well. That is a $42 million project, SRF funded, the application is in review, and is expected to be in review during this next fiscal year, with final preliminary engineering projected 25, 26, and start of construction fiscal year 26, 27. I also did wanna mention that the interim city manager has directed staff to, to have a water system assessment performed. We're currently reaching out to well companies and automation companies for assistance. This assessment will help identify areas of concern, and will be used to help develop the capital improvement program. So go over some of the projects that are queued up for the next three years in streets. First one is a Pulverizon overlay of Four Street, that is from Park to F. That would be a grindout and a two-inch overlay, new pavement on that street, funded out of our RMRA and Measure V funds. We're looking at preliminary engineering and construction to be completed this next fiscal year. Another rehabilitation, road rehabilitation project on Main Street. This is north of Newcastle Drive. There's a section in front of the Newcastle Apartments, right just north of those, that area. That road is pretty bad shape, it's about 450 linear feet of area that needs to, a road that needs to be grinded out and repaved. Again, that is also gonna be funded out of our RMRA and Measure V, with preliminary engineering and construction to be completed, or anticipated to be completed this next fiscal year. Those two will be bid at the same time, just for accounting of scales reasons. Our multi-use walk path, both Max Foster, Phase One and Phase Two. Those are scheduled to go out to bid in construction this next fiscal year. Sidewalk infill projects, 2022 pedestrian improvement project. It's a CMAC project. And that project consists of constructing pedestrian improvements to Front, First, Second, A, and D Street. And we are anticipating preliminary engineering to be- And we are anticipating preliminary engineering to be, take place this next fiscal year, '25, '26, with going out to bid and construction taking place fiscal year '26, '27. Another sidewalk infill project. It's another CMAC-funded project. It's called the 2023 Sidewalk Infill Project. That is, has been recently awarded. That project consists of pedestrian improvements from the corner of Campbell and Stephanie to the entrance of Foster Farms. There'll be new sidewalk curb and gutter installed at that location and also filling in a missing sidewalk, another infill project at the end of J Street by Arkalian Park. These funds have not been obligated yet, but we're anticipating them to be obligated and being able to start PE '26, '27. If they obligate it sooner, and this is MCAG, then we could try to move that timeline up. Finally, in streets, another pulverized and overlay road rehabilitation project on Main Street from, I have listed E Street to I Street, but looking at it with engineering, they're recommending that we go to, closer to D Street where we left off on the last downtown improvements. We're still, engineering's still working on an engineer's estimate for that, but we're looking at that going out to bid fiscal year '25, '26 with construction '26, '27. If we could squeeze in the construction to '25, '26, we will, just depending on how extensive that project is, because that area will need a curb gutter. There is some missing curb and gutter in that area.
Anthony, I know it's going to be a very expensive venture, but what is our plan on Campbell?
That is an expensive, very expensive venture. We
I get it, but
are going to have to take slow bites out of that as well. I know we've been trying to lobby for regional money as well. It's a hard sell for regional money, though, just because it's Campbell. But staff has been trying to lobby for regional funds to help with that effort.
Yeah, because that's probably, it's getting bad.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll move down to wastewater, as you heard from engineering earlier as well. That sludge thickening project that has gone out to bid and we're projected to construct this next fiscal year and complete this within this next fiscal year, '24, '25. Sewer lift station, Briarwood Lift Station. It's another renovation project for sewer lift station. I've got two of them listed, Briar Lift Station and Hammont Lift Station. They'll both be funded out of the Sewer Enterprise. The first one will go out to bid this next fiscal year. Construction will take place most likely at the end of this next fiscal year, depending on delays, equipment, lead time. It's very hard. The lead times are outrageous right now on trying to purchase or procure electrical components, panels. So that may be pushed off a little bit, but I wanted to try to be realistic and spread this out. That's both, and we've, these are very old, older lift stations, antiquated lift stations. And what we're doing here as part of the renovation is new pumps, new internal piping, discharge piping, isolation valves, check valves, any electrical panels that need to be renovated or upgraded, level control.
I do, Anthony. So I understand what you're saying about spreading them out, like specifically, I'm looking at the lift stations renovations, and I know that it's difficult to get someone to do the job because of the lead time and stuff like that. Wouldn't it be, or, and then again, I don't know, because I'm not in your shoes, but isn't it, would it be best to just have someone put the bid on both and then, and then work on both of them at the same time? Because having it, you know, getting somebody back the following year, and it's like, once again, you know, and then, so that, and then if not, even at least order parts and just have all the stuff that is going to be needed for the other state, for the other lift station handy, but I don't know, is that even an option?
Yes, and that's the plan, mayor. Within the budget, we do have both projects listed for this next fiscal year to be funded, and, but I just wanted to be realistic about potential time delays and equipment procurement. Didn't want to make promises that we can't keep, but we will make every effort to try to do them at the same time and facilitate both projects.
Thank you.
The third project in the sewer lift station or sewer area is 99 Lift Station. That's Pit Two renovation. It's the same thing there. Need new pumps and new internal piping, check valve, isolation valves, level control, and we're anticipating going, completing the preliminary engineering and going out to bid fiscal year '26, '27. Storm, there's a typo there. I should say East Avenue Storm Station. Engineering reported on this earlier. This has gone out to bid already and anticipated completion is this fiscal year, this next fiscal year, '24, '25. We do have the proposed pump station listed. This is unfunded, but we would like to move forward with completing the appraisal, securing an easement, and possibly having engineering take care of the service, electrical service design. But this is something that is unfunded. Total project, engineering estimate is $800,000. Of course, we would take a small bite out of that. Another area, another project is storm drainage evaluation. If council recalls, the resident voiced its concern about a large amount of storm water flowing down Second Street and kind of flooding out that, that street. So we're planning to have engineering perform a survey and evaluate the area and provide some, some options on how to remedy. Another project is a potential project, project per council direction, and I'll go over that on the next slide. Our parks, we're looking at completing another city hall artificial turf project with the installation this next fiscal year, '24, '25. Arkalian playground replacement funded out of a CFD and parks improvement, park impact fees, excuse me, installation of, anticipating installation '25, '26. We'll purchase it or procure will take place '24, '25, but again, lead times are outrageous for playground equipment as well. Usually takes about a year to procure the equipment. Arkalian restroom renovation, $256,000, funded out of the CFD 12, 13. We're looking at construction installation '25, '26. Staff also will be working with engineering to solicit or have them put together a, to evaluate the possibility of building a block wall restroom at that location as well. And just going back to that potential
Anthony, I was sent this by a user, citizen. Over at Gallo, there is this piece of equipment that looks like some sort of torture device, but I don't
Oh yeah, that's exercise equipment that
Yeah, but, yeah? No, I call it torture device, but about what, but what is the approximate cost for one of these?
Oh, we purchased that, I want to say 2019, somewhere around that, that area, time, 2019, maybe 2020. I believe that was about $6,500 at that time.
Okay.
Somewhere around there, that ballpark.
Yeah, I have some, I guess it's good for the elderly. What? No, I don't want it in my house. But I was texting, I guess some folks really like that because handicap accessible and all that, and it's good for them to, you know. So just okay, I'll have to talk to the city manager later on to see if there's any money to put him in a couple of request areas.
Yeah, that has been a hit. That location does get used a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've been hearing. They say, well, time you go there, we, we sit there, we come back not being able to use it because others are ahead of it.
And it is ADA accessible, so
Yeah, that's why I was, I'll talk to the city manager about that. And then I'm glad, no, you know what? I'm going to keep quiet because the city manager knows when my granddaughter came to find a complaint about the, I'm glad that it's somewhere on the list there, you know, about the slide, you know? So I'm glad that it's on there somewhere. So thank you.
Okay, back to the potential project per council direction. The owner at, came out and the, the owner at 1698 Grapevine came out and communicated with the city manager's office to express his concern and, and wishes to, to have the MID vault removed from his property and have the storm lines relocated. We've had a couple of meetings with, with the, with the owner and listened to him and his request. We have, are working on preliminary options, or engineers working on preliminary options, and costs are currently being evaluated by both Public Works and Engineering. Project options and costs will be brought to council in the near future for, for consideration. This vault receives storm water from two of our nearby storm basins, which is Don Myers and one at the end of Grapevine. I think it's behind Yamato School. But during storm events, waters pump from those storm basins to this MID vault, and that's how we remove our, our storm water. That's all I got.
Council, any questions, comments? Coffee?
I'll take more of those energy drinks with coffee mixed in them. Well, thank you, Anthony. It was very informative. Yeah, I, I re-raised my concern that, yeah, you're right, talk about taking bites out of Campbell. I think, I know that certain portion of it got fixed out by Arco, kind of helped, but maybe we need to start going backwards. I don't know where we're going to get the funding, but hopefully, I mean, what do you think it would take to take it to, at least from Hammont to Maine? What would it take from there? And it doesn't matter, it's late. If I faint, I faint. So go ahead, tell me the number approximately.
I, I wouldn't, though. I'd be guessing unless engineering could help out in that
Around two and a half?
Estimate, but just to give you, just to give you a
What would it cost per foot?
I'm not sure. You want to chime in on that, Noe?
You don't want to take a
You're a sticker shot.
I won't, I won't hold you to it. I mean, just, you guys, you guys got to figure it out, approximate cost per square meter, square foot?
Well, while Noe's thinking about it, I did have staff evaluate and get a proposal just to have the striping refreshed from, on Campbell, from Witten Parkway to Dwight. And just the striping alone was going to be $250,000, just the striping.
Yeah.
Just the center divider, the fog lines, the double solid lines, and this isn't any road repair whatsoever.
I don't know. I know, but thank you. I was about to say the same thing. Get some of our taggers. They'll be really good at it, you know? And I'm not going to hold you to it. Just, what I'm trying to do is figure out to see if there's anybody we can reach out beyond Measure V, you know? I don't know, it's just worth asking.
Noe Martinez is Officer of City Engineer. Yeah, the cost would depend on what kind of treatment we provide for Campbell. I know it's been mentioned it's pretty bad. If it is to a point where it needs full reconstruction, it would be pretty expensive. I mean, I think, I don't have a touch on latest cost with all the inflation going up, but I know that not too long ago, we would look at doing one block for like half a million. So, yeah, depending on how far we need to go there, yeah, it would be in the millions for sure.
Yeah, because I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but I've had, like, the congressman others ask, do we have any projects we want to list, you know? It may be worth the ask, I don't know. It doesn't hurt to say, hey, is there money available? Yeah, you know, just, that's why I was kind of trying to get the idea a little bit, you know, that's all.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can definitely go back and come up with
Yeah, don't spend too much money and cost on it. Just kind of give me a rough idea, okay, if you don't mind?
Will do.
Thank you.
Monica, did I already went out for public comment? Not yet. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to go out for public comment. Item number 10, anyone on the phone? Here and none. Any public comment in the chamber? Item number 10. It's okay, we're almost done. We're almost done. All right, bringing it back to the dais, 1027. Okay, so this item is, requires consideration to adopt a resolution, so
Any other questions, comments, recommendations, motions?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to adopt the resolution, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 24, '25, and the GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 24, '25, and the infrastructure work plan.
Thank you. Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Soto?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes, a vote of three, zero.
Thank you. Next, we have council directions on future agenda items.
If we could have an update, I don't know if Jackie was, was here, but I know the question was asked for interim roomers about the fireworks, I think it was regard to the fireworks booth. Did we ever get a report out about who was awarded booths this year? I mean, that would be a Jackie question. She was here, but
Yeah, we can bring it back. Sure, we can bring it back.
And then also with this intense heat and temperature rising, have we put out to our residents anything about cooling stations, offering water, City Hall or something? offering water, City Hall or something?
I can follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you. So meeting adjourned, 10:29. Good night, everyone.